Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for April 12, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:30. Roll call vote.
Gordon Clark, present.
Carolyn Smart, present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being video recorded. Anybody in the audience and a member in the audience as well will be taped recording. So there was one addition under 1.4 and we added 3.11 and that was reposted yesterday. Is that right, Jody?
Yeah.
And it was to add a request from the Board of Health Administrator to declare five metal storage containers surplus. So with that, on to Agenda Item 2.1. Appoint Martin Scott as EMS Coordinator for the Fire EMS Department effective April 12, 2016 with six months probationary period continued upon the passing of a preplacement exam and background check. The only question I had, would it just be salary to be determined between you and the chief? Because I didn't see a...
It is, there was a range posted and it will be subject to the final negotiation of the chief.
Okay, all right. So we were just making a motion to appoint him then?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or let's take a motion.
Motion to appoint Martin Scott as EMS Coordinator for the Fire EMS Department effective April 12, 2016 with a six-month probationary period contingent upon passing of a preplacement exam and background check.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 3.1, discussion. The Division of Local Services report for consolidated DPW department and review of existing membership of the DPW exploratory committee. And I had actually put this on the agenda at the request of Mr. Malanson, so if you want to come up and talk to us.
Sure. My name is Paul Malanson, I live at 79 Clement Road. I am a water professional in the state of Mass in the Commonwealth. I'm a member of Mass Water Works, New England Water Works. I sit on, I don't know how many committees, but I know water regulations pretty well. I work with a lot of DPWs. I'm not against consolidated DPWs when they make sense. In reviewing the report, even more so today, I continue to find inconsistencies and errors in it and find it to be a little bit flawed. It says in there that it's supposed to be, the potential is to try and save money. And I think in the letter that I gave you guys, I pretty much outlined that it's not going to, there's no way that it can. You're creating a position that's anywhere from $90,000 to $130,000 in salary range. You have a water entity that the highway guys, they talked about coordinating people, different departments. Highway can't work. They can dig the hole, but they can't work on the pipe, they can't work on the wells, they can't, unless you're going to certify the entire department. And then the idea of that saving you money isn't either because to certify someone that equals some sort of pay increase. I had problems with the idea of putting Board of Health underneath it. Board of Health, to me, Board of Health and Conservation always need to be separate entities. They're the regulatory. They need to have the authority and the autonomy to say, "No, you can't do that."
What I get out of it, Todd, the report actually is with the Board of Health, is that the Board of Health remains, but that the DPW pick up the maintenance of the recycling center because right now they contract everything out?
No, they talked about putting the entire staff underneath there. If you'll read the report, I think it was on...
Yeah, for shared responsibilities of the administrative, but not...
I just, I think, I think any sort of combination of the two is going down the wrong path. Similar to my concerns, and I understand the attachment of the Water Enterprise Fund. But there are ways, like the beginning of funding the DPW director's salary out of the power of the Enterprise Fund. I have a problem with that because the DPW director is not going to give any benefit to the water utility. He really not. You're still going to have to have a superintendent, you're still going to have to have certified water operators. There is no benefit. So funding his salary out of that, to me, goes against why the Water Enterprise...
Yeah, I saw where they recommended that. What did you think about the facilities being under there?
Well, here's the idea. Everything I've ever seen on water resiliency and water sustainability, DPWs are talked about. You have a water entity, you have a sewer, a stormwater, a discharge permit. Comparing us to Pepperell is comparing us to a Himalayan yak. They have Nipte's permits, they have a sewer, they have stormwater, they have, and they have drinking water. Then you have highway, not to put highway at a different level, but of the four big boys on the block, those are your four big ones. Highway comes in and then facilities. The idea, I think you're on the right track. I would rather see, instead of creating a DPW director, mandate you have a supervisor's meeting where you talk about, before you go into the planning, budget planning process or you start instituting where the superintendent of Highway Water get together and sit down and say, "Look, you know, this road's got to get done. Does your water main need to get done? Combine the two because you'll find more state money available to actually get the paving done."
Yeah, we talked about that.
Right.
The DPW might actually be able to cover.
Correct. So I think...
And I think that's a lot of the reason we started looking into, you know, you had a lot of complaints where the highway would go and repave a road and then a couple of weeks later the water would be ripping it up to replace a main. So you definitely need more coordination.
I haven't actually seen that. I've seen it in other towns, but I haven't seen that.
Bar for hell, I think.
I don't think, but I really, well, you never know what happens. Did they lose, did they break?
Well, no, I'm not saying they went in there to replace it, you know, but they went in to fix it or whatever. They weren't replacing the whole main.
Correct. But that's going to happen. I mean, it doesn't matter. The road could have stayed as it is and they would still potentially have had a water main break and they still would have had to dig it up. So no sort of coordination was going to help that. We don't have enough to make sense. You're talking, but like I said, you're talking about creating a position, $90,000 to $130,000.
If we follow this report, we haven't even gotten to that point yet, Todd. Looking at it...
But there's so many things, and my problem with the report, and my problem isn't with anybody in this town, on this committee or anything, or the idea of it. My problem, and the reason why I wrote the letter that I did, is there wasn't one water person in there, regulatory, operational, included in that DSL report.
Well, I mean, I agree with you, except in that we haven't even come to the determination whether we want to include water in the DPW. It's in its infancy, looking at it, and that's what they're doing, meeting with different towns, seeing...
No, and I was at the cemetery one.
Yeah, and so they're gathering data to say, "Okay, you know what? We agree with the report on this point, we don't agree with it on that point, this is what we're recommending." So it's...
But your main primacy of a DPW, we don't have them. So I don't, facilities is what? One person with a couple of part-time, correct?
Yeah, well, we have pretty big temporary staff.
Okay. Cemetery is one full-time, two part-time. I was at the meeting there. They were of the opinion that it would not be a help to them, that they wouldn't be comfortable moving their, why move their equipment down to Highway Barn when the work needs to be done right where the equipment's stored? They wouldn't be necessarily up for moving their offices because in their discussion, and John will back me up on this, they were talking about, this is where they greet the families that are planning to bury their loved ones. They necessarily, it's set, the office is set up that way. They necessarily wouldn't want to bring them into a sanitary highway department office, so to speak. So there are so many other things that are wrong with the report itself that I think you're, how can you continue with something and going down the road if from the very get-go it's flawed?
Well, you're saying the report's flawed, Todd, and you're a pretty intelligent man. You've been around a lot of different communities. So I think what would help the committee and possibly the board is if you take the consolidated report and outline exactly what it is you're disagreeing and the reasons why, and so that they can take it into consideration when they're studying it. I think that will help a lot. You know, you have some good points and these are all things that the committee needs to hear, you know, so that they can incorporate into their report when they bring it back to the selectmen. So that's kind of the point. I know they met with Peter Shattuck from Pepperell and they're meeting with some other towns and they're meeting with all the departments. So all the data and all the points that you can provide them with are going to help them when they're considering it. And you know, maybe, maybe at the end of the day, it's something as simple as what you said, or maybe it's something a little more complex than that, but we're not even there yet. You know, you start out with...
I just, I just don't want to see the town waste its time. I am, I'm of the opinion that your time is valuable, that the people who commit...
That's why we're stuck down there.
Well, no, but, but their time is valuable too.
Yeah.
And maybe it's the army in me. I don't want to go down a plan and a path that from the, I never liked the operations guy when he had this all brilliant plan and then you looked at it and you said, "Yeah, we can't put a tank up a goat trail." So I think you're starting from a point in the negative and you're going to battle to trying to get out to even, and I just don't, I just, I would rather see the report rewritten. As I said, there's so many different things that are wrong with that report.
Well, I think that's a great place to start, Todd. Why don't you, if you...
I have, I'm actually, I'm meeting, I'm trying to meet with DSL. I have the Assistant Commissioner of DEP, Doug Fine. He has been a great asset in trying to connect me with the right people at DSL. He asked me why I wrote the letter. I said, "Because I tried to contact DOR DSL for about six weeks and it made me aggravated, so I wrote that letter figuring you could help me." Because it's not in DEP's wheelhouse. It isn't. It's a municipal finance thing. But my problem is, and it's a big problem at state, that one entity of state has no idea what the other side does. And you have a financial entity making decisions basically on water operations or something that will affect water operations. And to me, that's a bad combination.
Well, I mean, we had a DSL report done on the Communication Center regionalizing it, and that too. They had several study groups and they looked at it and they outlined what they agreed, what they, you know, at the end of the day, it didn't work. Ashby didn't want to regionalize with us. So I think that's more, the point that we're at right now is that we have this report, we want all the feedback, outline what you don't agree with, or if you do meet with DSL and you guys come to a conclusion on what areas that you don't agree with, bring that to the DPW committee or, you know, to the, or to Jim and he can forward it off to the committee. And it gives them a basis for study. You know, as the Board of Selectmen, we have to look at efficiencies and structure long-term. We do have a lot of aging municipal workers in the DPW-related field that are going to be retiring within five, 10 years.
That's statewide. I mean, you're...
Yeah.
The water operators, I think the water industry is looking at a 40% retirement rate in the next five years.
We have a lot of trouble with municipal workers.
The problem with, especially with water though, is getting people to pass the Certified Water Operator's exam. And getting to be able to take the test is now made a lot harder. You have to take a $1,000 class and you have to get above a 75 on the test and it, the D1, T1, okay, maybe, but once you get the D2, treatment to, D is distribution, T is treatment, once you start getting to those, there's a lot more complex math. There is a lot more IT stuff being involved in the security stuff. So it's not as simple as it used to be, and that's part of the problem.
Which isn't a bad thing.
No, it's not.
But...
But, so, like I said, I, it's not the idea of trying to make things more efficient to save money. My main problem is with the report and I, you know, like I said, you're, you're starting in the negative, in my opinion, and, you know, and I've talked to DPW directors. I've talked, and I'm not going to name them, but I've talked to several. I deal with them on a daily basis, and not one of them agreed with that report.
Well, you know, I think, I think if you go under, I know a lot of folks out there have actually had a chance to read it. It is on our website if anybody's interested.
You can't download it off the website. It doesn't work. The link doesn't work. I tried today.
Can we fix that, please? Okay. You know, encourage people, but I mean, it's something that a lot of municipalities have looked at and, and that's what we're doing. And we need, we need...
But Carolyn, that's my point. The ones that have, have sewer, water, discharge...
What does it say here, Todd? It says, after, after, we found that in reviewing communities statewide, about two-thirds have established public works departments or have informally combined related functions similar to DPWs. Of these, all are responsible for highway-related activities, road and sidewalk maintenance, sweeping, drainage and winter operations, and most also manage parks, 78%, tree services, 75%, public cemetery, 66%, and many others include water, 69%, sewer, 73%, solid waste, 80%, recycling, 79%. So, you know, the 70s...
But the vast majority have all of those. It's not, our big, two big boys are water and highway.
Well, we have the tree ward and we have facilities, we have the recycling center...
But in talking about a department, a DPW, those are, not to degrade what they do, but those are ancillary. Your biggest, two biggest things that cost you the most money are water and the highway. In, in formation of a DPW, it doesn't make sense if you don't have the sewer, the stormwater or the discharge. Then thank God we don't have the discharge. You really don't want to go there. So, and, you know, and it's, I don't think sewer is something that we're looking at anytime soon, nor should we. I mean, I mean, it would change the tenor of the town. You're talking about being able to change zoning laws because you'd be able to more tightly pack people and things like that.
I don't think we'd ever be able to afford the initial infrastructure.
No, that's the other thing. But anyways...
Yeah, but if you could do that, if you could, and we can continue this conversation to the next meeting, if you could outline what it is you disagree with the report so that we can review it and touch base with it, I think that would be very helpful.
Good enough.
And I think it would be helpful to the committee as well. But it's important that we get everybody's feedback. It's an open process.
Right. I have no problem continuing to be vocal.
I know that, Todd. I have no doubt.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, folks. So let's see. 3.2, Review approved Chapter 90 project request in the amount of $19,900 for stormwater mapping. Do you have any questions on that project request?
No. I think Todd does.
Todd does?
So what sections of the town actually have stormwater infrastructure?
We actually have a stormwater bylaw. Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not.
We could find out, we have Karen get back to you and let you know.
Right. That I'm curious about.
Maybe that's why they need the mapping.
It's for the GIs mapping.
This is just for engineering services to map stormwater systems throughout the town. This is not to do any particular part of the town. This is to map the system through the town.
Because we don't know what's out there, basically?
That I can't... Yeah, you do want to talk to Karen. She's so involved in that.
But this is for the study.
No, it makes sense to me. I just, I just...
Okay. So make a motion that we review and approve Chapter 90 project request, stormwater mapping for the amount of $19,900.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.3, Review approved request by the Highway Superintendent for FY '17 material bid contract extension. So did we just sign a one-year? Would we have an option for a one-year extension?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Anybody have any questions?
Do I need to read this whole thing?
If you want the folks to know what we're paying for reclamation and crack sealing and milling road services, go right ahead.
All right. I'm going to make a motion that we review and approve the request by the Highway Superintendent regarding the fiscal year '17 memorial, material bid contract extension. And I'll read the memorandum here. Below are the fiscal year '17 material bid contract extension recommendations. Fiscal year '17 is an option year as specified in the fiscal year '16 material bid. Terms and conditions provided the Board of Selectmen approves to exercise these options. One, reclamation, all states' asphalt, ink, in place per square yard, $2.02. Oh gosh, how do you pronounce this word? Bituminous asphalt? PJ Keating Company in place per ton, $66.95. Crack sealing, superior seal coat per linear foot, $0.27. Milling, existing road services, Lazaro paving corporation per square yard, $2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that'll go to, do you need the dates on? It'll be from July 1st to June 30th. Okay. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, John.
Good, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was late getting here and I just was wondering if the Board had on 3.1 on the DPW department, had you entertained the request of the Study Committee for additional members?
No, actually, we kind of forgot to address that. You might go back to 3.1. From what I understand, and John's here, that the DPW committee had called me and told me that they were thinking about adding two members. We as a Board haven't discussed that. What I did say to John was that, I think, and I talked to our town administrator, I think there is a need to have possibly two more members. I don't know if members at large are going to do the trick. I think maybe liaison from the Board of Selectmen, maybe a ThinkCon member, our town administrator might help because we have the three at-large members.
I know Mr. Shanks and Mrs. Smith, who I met, I met both of them for the first time, and I actually met John for the first time at the cemetery feeding. Their, Mr. Shanks and Mr. Smith's opinion was, they wanted an actual accountant potentially to go in there and look at the numbers, adding up the pluses and the minuses and see if it did make sense. That was one of their biggest, am I right in saying that?
Right. Someone with the financial, you know...
Well, that's kind of what the DOR report is. They're all accountants. They got all our numbers in there.
Yeah, but...
But I think that's why maybe a town administrator would be able to provide good guidance as well.
Right. And my opinion was that you should have someone with some water regulatory experience in there. I don't think I'm a fit because of my opinions about it, but I think you do need someone that, because you're talking about the water, I think you do need someone that knows the water regulations and operations a little bit better than a layman. And I would include that person as well.
Do we have a recommendation from the... Well, we haven't received anything officially from the DPW committee. Do you want to set up a meeting with the Board of Selectmen DPW Committee and talk to them? Because I know John's here, but, you know, Mr. Smith and, or maybe we could go to one of their meetings.
An update from them, just generally, and then if, to understand this request.
Their next meeting is at the water district, the water department's water commissioners' meeting.
Okay, so maybe we can organize a meeting with them or they could come to our next meeting. If you could touch base with Jim and let us know when we're doing it.
On that point, Madam Chair, I mean, I think it'd be, it'd be a great idea for the town administrator to serve as a staff support function, but obviously you wouldn't want the town administrator to be a voting member of that committee. So whether it's, you know, a member of the Select Board as the liaison and then one at-large, I know that there were a couple of names that...
Mr. Sullivan was one.
Mr. Shanks and Mr. Sullivan was one. So if there are people out there perhaps that have some experience and background, that's one of the at-larges, so perhaps, I don't recall, is it, are you the liaison for...
Yeah, he's highway and water and cemetery. So, yeah, that might be something that we do and then post for those two positions and get them some added help. I'm sorry?
Who did you list as the water person that you said?
Liaison, me.
Say again?
Liaison from the Selectmen's Board would be me.
Okay.
And the highway and...
Cemetery parks and DPW-related functions and public safety and city's general government.
Okay. So I was looking for more like someone that is a certified water operator or something like that, that actually...
Well, you know, we could always use you for your expertise, Todd. You just won't ever vote because you're very biased.
Be honest with you, I'd want, would want to really to, but I, you know...
I hear you. I hear you. So, yeah, if we could...
I'll work with John.
That would be great.
Your next meeting and you'll know whether they, yeah, they have an interest in doing that way as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sure.
May I interrupt? I see the Fire Chief here. Does the Chief have anything besides 3.1?
No, but I was curious about...
The only reason I ask, I know you have some other things going on, and if that was the only thing...
Yeah, I was hanging out to see during the work session for the emergency capital spending.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we weren't having to sit here for no reason.
We can, if you, do you have training tonight, Chief? Because we can move that up in our agenda.
I do not, but if you want to move it.
Oh, all right. Well, then you could just hang out with us then.
Just being honest, I don't have that.
I can cover you on those if you need to go. I mean, I've already spoken with individual members of the Board about the fact that you do have these needs. They are emergency. The capital planning bylaw doesn't allow them to go forward without a declaration by the town administrator and voter of the selected. So I think everybody's on the same page from what I understand. So you need to...
I have no problem moving it up. My members have a...
You've already talked about it. Might as well do it.
Might as well move it up.
Thank you for that. Just that I know he's always got other things to do, so.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
You want to go up and join as chief when we do that?
So what I'd like to do is move down to 4.1 and we're under the town administrator's updates, his financial updates, item number C, Board consideration of voting certain capital expenditures as emergency per section 14-1E of the Town's Capital Planning Committee bylaw.
Do we have that?
The bylaw itself?
No, I mean the...
I do have updated...
The information. The warrant article.
Draft versions of the warrant, although it says draft and today's date and the header.
Thank you.
If you go to page eight in that document, articles 12 and 13 specifically, you'll see the chief has put forth articles for his capital needs. They are emergency, $12,000 for the IV pumps that are state mandated for the ambulance and $190,000 for the lease purchase of a completely outfitted and equipped ambulance for the Fire Department EMS department. I, I would go on record as saying that those are voted emergency in nature and if it pleases the Board to have a vote in concurrence, then we can get them on the warrant. Just to be clear for people following this, we do have a bylaw in town that says all capital must go through the Capital Planning Committee to appear as a recommendation of that committee. There is an exception of the end for emergencies. And in this particular year, we don't have a capital plan proper that's going to appear on a warrant until the fall. These items can't wait until the fall. So it's for that reason that he's placed them and that reason that I'm making that recommendation.
Now, to bring up another subject, does the water department have some as well? Do we need to vote them all?
If you, if you look right below 13 in the brackets, placeholder for water department submissions, I did receive this, this weekend while I was gone, an updated email from Superintendent Rafus, and when she has capital plan items that they have determined by vote of the commissioners that are also emergency. I've not reviewed them and been able to put them in the form of a warrant, but I do have that as a placeholder and would look to your consideration for either a vote this evening of that or if it's your preference, we do have a meeting, I gather we'll be meeting next week to take up the matter and finalize the warrant and then post. You could take it up with a little, the benefit of a little more detail than we do have a note.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that on the 19th then.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. So Chief, do you want to explain to the folks about your ambulance situation? I know we've talked about it, but...
As you know, back in November, we had the unfortunate occurrence of blowing the engine in one of our ambulances. It's a 2006 ambulance that was due for replacement anyways, and it's the second time that we've blown the motor in that. It's basically, that year Ford Motor, the six-liter motor is known infamous for being a bad motor. Chief Klein replaced it in 2000, I believe it was in 2013.
1213.
12 or 13. Of course, it was outside of the warranty when it blew back in November, and the way the ambulances are built, you have to actually take the box off from the ambulance to change the engine, so it's $25,000 to replace the engine. The obvious is that we think it's throwing good money after bad to put another, another engine in an ambulance that's already blown two, three times the lucky streak, so rather than spend another $25,000 on an ambulance that's up for replacement anyways, is to replace it. We're currently running a 1999 ambulance in its place as a backup. We had held onto that ambulance, it was no longer fit to be an ambulance, but we kept it as a special operations truck for rehabilitation of firefighters, we went to police scenes for command posts, and it just carried miscellaneous equipment. We kind of kept it around because it had a little bit of value left. We've been forced to put that back into service as our reserve ambulance. We're thankful that we had that, to be able to do that, because about three weeks ago, the diesel emissions in the, in our frontline ambulance of 2012 had issues, and it was out of service for a week. So our primary ambulance was a 1999 ambulance for, for a little over a week. So we were hoping to do this during the special town meeting, but as you know, we didn't have one. The $190 would come from the ambulance receipts, so it's not, not taxpayer funds, it's coming out of the ambulance receipts account. We just need voter permission to spend the money.
Is that the three-year lease, like we've done in the past?
The last one, the 2012, was a three-year lease at less than 1%, I think it was half a percent interest. We're hoping we would still get the same interest rate, or something close.
You'd have to vote to bid anyways, lease purchasing. So I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Please.
Just ask for clarification from the chief. Where in the past, we've had trouble, I know with a lot of other municipalities that buy high-mileage, high-use vehicles, they sometimes get a special warranty just to give us protection. Have you looked at that at all?
We have not, we're probably, there's a backlog on chassis right now. So unfortunately, we're probably going to be looking at either purchasing a demo ambulance right off the lot, that's, you know, been the circuit, and we can try to get whatever we can for a warranty. It's unlikely we're going to be able to order what we want because they're talking a year out.
But if it's a demo, it would still be applicable to, I'm just thinking that where we have a limited amount of these, and we don't want to be in this position for short money upfront, if you could check in, and Mr. Cryler, check into it.
Yep, absolutely.
I know many municipalities where they have high-cost initial things, that they'll get that additional, because it's just not, it's the whole, more than just a cruiser. So I'm just trying to look to the future so you wouldn't have to come before us if we had a warranty that's a little more than normal, and I'm not trying to throw a wrench into it, but if you, Mr. Cryler, could look at that. A lot of municipalities do do that, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I just have a question about Article 12, the $12,000 for the IV pump. Is that a new item that we haven't had in the ambulances before, that the state's now mandating that we purchase?
It is. The, the new protocols, ambulance protocols, are now requiring our medics to give a number of medications by IV pump, and this titrates the medication and gives it over a longer period of time, instead of a paramedic trying to push it, you know, manually and calculate how quickly or slowly to give the medication. They're now requiring some of our drugs to be titrated with an IV pump. So effective January 1st of 2017, all ALS ambulances will be required to have a pump on it, and there's $6,000 piece.
Is there any state funding for this? Any grants?
This is our classic unfunded mandate from the state.
Unfunded mandate, okay. I just want to get that point out, that the state's mandating something yet again that's not funded. Okay. But again, this is also from ambulance receipts, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that account's gone up quite a bit, you know, pulling back the last few years.
It has, and if I may, Jim and I have discussed changing our rates. Our rates haven't been adjusted since 2011, so it is my intent to meet with our billing company in May, when our new EMS coordinator comes on board, assuming you approved that earlier tonight.
We did.
To meet with our billing company and adjust our rates, so our revenue should be even more next year.
So how's that work with Medicare? Can you only adjust them as much as that you'll be reimbursed for all, or do you bill everybody hoping to...
Well, that's, that's the fallacy, and it's, it's a crazy world in there, out there in the healthcare, as you know. It's a broken system. The fallacy in the past has always been that you could only charge 80% over Medicare. So if Medicare would, would give you $1,000 for provided treatment A, then you would only charge $1,800 for somebody that was not on Medicare. So it's 80% over Medicare. In the real world, that treatment probably costs somewhere in the middle, so with Medicare, we generally lose money, with private care, we make money. We're now seeing private industry, if we were to have contract ambulance here, they may be charging as much as 300% over Medicare. Our rates are still at 80% over Medicare. I've talked with a bunch of towns around us, most of them are going up to 150 to 200% over Medicare, and seeing, you know, $30,000, $40,000 increase in their revenues. So we were at 356 last year in revenue. We're projected to be a little bit lower than that this year, but that's still an all-time high, that 356. If we adjust our rates, we may get closer to 400,000. It'd be closer to being self-funded, which is, the only way to really truly be self-funded is for us to become a regional system, and to take over ambulance services for like Ashby. We just don't have the call volume here. There's not a lot of growth in town, so the only way to increase your, your revenue is to increase your call volume. And the only way for us to increase call volume would be to take over some surrounding towns, and, you know, we've had those discussions in the past, and having them again, and currently really nobody's interested in doing that, so.
What is our call volume doing?
It's holding pretty steady. We've been about 1,000 EMS calls per year for the last two or three years. It fluctuates up, you know, it might go up 15 or 20, but this year, I think it was down like two or three. So it's, you know, the standard that I've seen in other places of employment, it goes up five or six percent per year. It's certainly not doing that here. It's going up maybe one or two percent, and then it goes down one or two percent. So the popu, there doesn't seem to be a lot of population growth here, although you're still would tend to see the ambulance calls go up as the population's aging. So it's, it's holding steady the last few years.
Are we seeing more ALS, or is BLS, is, or is the common, or is the dip, is it about the same?
Everything's ALS nowadays.
Oh, everything's ALS now, okay.
Yeah, it's, nobody, nobody wants to, everybody wants everything now. It's not, you know, it's just, it's the industry standard, they expect advanced level for just about everything.
I think we send the paramedics on every call, don't we?
We do, we staff two medics on, two medics 24/7, or try to.
Whether it's a broken ankle or heart attack, it's the same.
Even something that seems like it's not an advanced life support, you know, like a broken bone, it's not a lot of, like a broken ankle, you're not going to necessarily die from that, but having a paramedic to give you some pain medication is really nice to have, especially if you're going to go be in a, you know, half-hour drive to the hospital.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion in accordance with the capital bylaw to add those two articles to the, is it the special, the annual town meeting warrant?
Correct.
We're adding it to the annual instead of the special? He doesn't need it now?
No.
It doesn't matter to me.
And he has the ability out of ambulance receipts, even if it's in an annual town meeting, to do it now.
Okay. Really? Because I thought you had to wait till July for...
It's confirmatory, and we'll make certain that we do it the right way. But just for the purpose of the motion, it would be pursuant to section 14-1E of the capital planning bylaw.
All right, I'll make the motion just as it's on our agenda. I'll make a motion that we approve the... Article 12-13 as written on the draft here. Put us, the capital expenditures under, as an emergency for the ambulance and IV pumps.
Second.
As an emergency per section 14. Dash 1E of the Town's Capital Planning Committee bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for tooling that up, Madam Chair.
Thanks for asking. I'm sure he appreciates it as he's leaving us now.
He's always got a lot on his plate, so.
Okay, so we, we took care of the contract bid extension, so 3.4, I'm going to recuse myself from, only because I'm in a butter to the VFW, so if my colleagues would take over for me.
I'd like to make a motion to review and approve the one-day local licenses for Terry Roy VFW Post 6538 as follows. Birthday party on April 23rd with serving hours from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. A birthday party on May 14th with serving hours from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. A wedding on June 11th with serving hours from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. And a 25th anniversary party, June 25th, with serving hours from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And a birthday party on April 23rd, 2016, with serving hours from 7:00 to 11:00.
Second, motion made and moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself. Okay, thank you.
You have one that's repeated twice.
Oh.
The first and the last are the same. Unless they're having two at the same time.
I don't think they are.
No, they're different dates.
No, they're not.
No.
It's April 23rd.
There's only four.
Seven to the fourth.
So, so it was put on there twice.
Do we want to amend that motion then?
Well, it's a repeat anyway.
Thank you.
Getting two licenses going in.
Anybody has a birthday, they can go down.
No. All right, 3.5, review, approve, cross, alter, and/or construct within a townway permit for unitil regarding a gas repair at one Greeley Road. I'm assuming the repair already happened, that's usually how it works. And Ed Kukel had signed off on it. Anybody have any questions?
The only question, Madam Chairman, about six or seven months ago, we had asked the town administrator to look into reevaluating the fee structure for those, we, it never happened, so I think if it's possible, just to see what we can come with other towns for that. Thank you.
I think we have a bargain here in Townsend.
Yes, we do. And, you know, there was a lot going on at the time, but we had made a motion for that to be looked at, so we do that, I think. Just to bring us up to date, thank you very much.
As long as you until doesn't pass that cost off onto us. So I'll entertain a motion.
We have two, do you want me to do two at the same time, the one Greeley Road and Seven Proctor?
Well, there's two different permits, I guess it wouldn't matter, but...
One motion.
One, one motion, okay.
I make a motion that we review and approve for cross, alter, and/or construct within a townway a permit for unitil for gas repair at both, or two separate permits, but for one for one Greeley Road and one for Seven Proctor Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that takes care of 3.6. 3.7, review, comment, planning board mandatory referral regarding a zoning change for ground-mounted solar energy overlay district. So the planning board's looking for some comments, anybody get a chance to look over the...
I actually didn't have a chance.
Want to take a moment and look over it?
I think I lost it.
Their hearing is...
It was last evening, and they postponed.
Oh, it was last evening?
Continue.
Continued?
Continue.
On the 25th?
At 8:00.
So folks, it's continued to April 25th at 8:00 PM. Anybody wants to add their comments to the, the planning board?
No. Well, it came in originally, was going to be by petition, and then the board agreed to sponsor it when it wasn't clear that the warrant would have been open for it to be submitted. I think it stands pretty clearly that it's an overlay district being proposed by the owners of a group of parcels down next to the three-phase transmission system, and...
Think there's any fear of the Attorney General ruling in a spot zoning? I noticed they increased the...
I think with, with the dimensions now, I think it's pretty safe, and particularly given the fact that the transmission lines and the substation are proximate to, to this overlay, proposed overlay, I think it's pretty safe.
So I didn't have any comments, let it follow the process.
I think there were a lot of people that came last night, and there were actually two, at least two of your people, that wanted to approach you about adding their parcels. Were you going to bring that up?
Well, I wasn't planning particularly large, but the, I was present at the planning board hearing last night.
I'm not keeping it a secret.
No, no, and the, you know, there was a lot of comment, there was one person that, I believe it was just one person that approached me about asking that they be added to the overlay district. Quite frankly, I was going to call Jim to talk about that at some point, whether or not that could be done, or whether it should not be done, but hadn't been able to give him a call.
We had to advertise for that, right, Jim?
It could be done by an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, that was my...
The zoning amendment is only prohibited if it is something that is going to make what was publicly posted more restrictive, and given that this is an overlay, it wouldn't be more restrictive. It would be a broader zone, so, and it is, as I understand it, because I spoke with Karen this morning, it's a parcel that is, a contiguous parcel with those already proposed, so it's just an extension by that parcel. I believe it is only one, Lori, that I've heard, and if there's another, I'm not yet aware of it.
There was another woman in the back of the room.
Oh, yes, there was another lady who, whom I think you all know, who is, had been approached by solar companies that, to allow installations on her property. She never spoke to me specifically about whether or not she wanted to be added to it, but she just wasn't sure how it affected her parcel.
Right, she stated that, you know, they've been after her for years, and whatnot, from California and all over, but she had been contemplating it, but didn't know how to go about it, so, and she's on the same street.
Yeah, yeah, she's in the neighborhood, she's in the same neighborhood.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a recommendation to Mr. Barrett, and if, we're meeting next Tuesday, we have a lot of meetings, and maybe it would help you, if during this week you had conversation with Mr. Cryler, you could give us an update next week, because it seems like there'd be a lot of information here.
Right.
And we want to, if that makes sense for everybody.
Certainly do that, Mr. Clark, and, and quite frankly, just so you know, there were a number of questions raised at the planning board meeting last night. What we're hoping to do is prepare what I'd like to call a frequently asked questions type of response to some of those questions.
Makes a lot of sense.
Try to give as much of information as we can about it, about the particular project that's involved, but also about just generally solar, ground-mounted solar facilities, and so I would copy you, we hope to get that to the, I'm sorry, when did you say your next meeting would be?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
So, but it's just that you, Mr. Cryler, could work it out, and then could give us an update with the facts.
Right, and we'll get you that, copy that information.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, it would help too, to encompass all the parcels, so there wouldn't be any question on spot zoning, if you were looking at the overlap.
Yeah, I mean, just in, in my experience, in my review of the law, I don't think it's a serious issue for spot zoning, myself, but, you know, spot zoning largely is determined, if it's questioned, it's determined in court. And the court decisions, I think, you know, there's something of a split decision on some of them, but I think that, given the cases I've looked at, this would meet muster.
Would fly. So I don't have any comment, does anybody have any comment?
No.
Okay. Good luck, John.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I just thought of something, we were, we were just talking about the fees for opening up the roads here, just delivers to Cryler, and he probably already knows this, he's usually on top of everything. We updated the solar permit fees to make us comparable to our communities, three, four months ago?
Yeah, I think so.
So, I know you're doing all that.
Mr. Hanks and I had spoken about that.
All right, thank you for that, I know you're going over everything, so, we already had done that.
Okay, folks, so, again, another review, comment, planning board mandatory referral on a street acceptance for Alyssa Drive. Are we going to be having a hearing on that?
Well, the...
We had a hearing last night.
Yeah.
And then, right, so, my understanding is that you voted to lay it out.
Mm-hmm.
They've held the hearing, and now comes back to you as referrals to appear on the warrant, which it is in the draft warrant, so now it would be just a question of whether or not the town meeting wants to accept. Planning board, obviously, making a recommendation, yea or nay, to the body.
Yeah, we did, we did vote to lay out both the streets, so, and it's on the warrant. So obviously, we wouldn't send a comment, since the hearing already happened. 3.9, review, declare surplus, a 2004 Crown Victoria sedan with an estimated value in accordance with the Kelley Blue Book value.
Madam Chair, this is, there's some confusion, this is not the, the vehicle that was declared surplus a month or so ago, this is yet another unmarked vehicle.
It was a 500, this is a Crown Victoria.
All right. Make a motion that we review, declare surplus, a 2,000 Ford Crown Victoria sedan with an estimated value in accordance with Kelley Blue Book, which according to the chief's letter is zero. For trade-in. For trade-in.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.10, review and sign a proclamation for National Volunteer Week. To sign a proclamation for our volunteers.
Oh, boy. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the entire community can affect change, can affect positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations like volunteer centers, and whereas more than 109 million volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly, and whereas during the week, this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers will be recognized for their commitments to community service, and whereas volunteers have the power to fight the pervasive feeling of social disconnection experienced by 81% of Americans and especially young people, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future and community as a caring and productive nation. Therefore, we, Carolyn Smart, Gordon Clark, and Cindy King, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Townsend, do recognize the week of April 10th through April 16th to be National Volunteer Week. In Townsend, and we urge our fellow citizens to join the effort and celebrate volunteers in the communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who volunteer in our town, we can connect with neighbors and strangers, and we place disconnection and isolation with understanding and compassion dated this 12th of April in the year 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to all our volunteers. Review, 3, 3.11, review, Board of Health Administrator Carla Weltas, request to declare five metal storage containers surplus estimated to have no value. From what I understand, they were going to just be hauled away at no cost for us, but...
The motion that we approved requested declare five metal storage containers surplus estimated to have no value from the Board of Health.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're down to our work session. 4.1, Town Administrators' Updates and Reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the board would allow, first, seeing personal updates, number one. We have Christine Vitale, Vitale, Vitalli?
Vitalli.
Vitalli. Completion of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission's Fundamentals for Conservation Commissioners Course, receiving a certificate of achievement. Just for the record, if I could read the letter from the executive director. Dear Board of Selectmen, very pleased to inform you that Christine Vitalli, associated with the Townsend Conservation Commission, successfully completed the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission's Fundamentals for Conservation Commissioners Course, and has received a certificate of achievement for that accomplishment. The 10-unit fundamentals course provides conservation commissioners and others with basic knowledge and practical tools essential to carry out the many responsibilities of administering the Wetlands Protection Act and open space planning. Such training promotes sound, consistent, fact-based decision-making and builds respect for conservation commission decisions. Each person who completes the course validates the wisdom of locally-based protection of wetlands and open space for current and future generations. We congratulate Christine for undertaking this training, as well as you and the Townsend Conservation Commission for recognizing the value of training in commission work and supporting this important training for your commission. We close this media release announcing Christine's achievement for forwarding to your local newspaper. We believe participation in continuing education on wetland and open space issues is an essential aspect of the work of the commission, members and staff. We hope you'll encourage commissioners to participate and assure that the commission budget includes adequate funding for the modest training fees necessary for participation. Sincerely, Eugene B. Benson, Executive Director.
I'd like to thank Christine for taking the time to talk about volunteers. Not only is she volunteering on the commission, she's going to all the classes, so, thank you, Christine.
Absolutely. All right, Madam Chair, if the board would allow, I'd like to take B in advance of A and start with the town meeting warrant draft and discussion. Earlier provided you the copy of this evening's draft, the most recent update, in the header it's indicated as draft 41216. What you have is one document that contemplates both the special town meeting and the annual town meeting, both taking place on the same date, May 3rd, 2016, which is the date prescribed by bylaw, and going through them very briefly for the board's consideration. What I would expect would be, at your meeting next week, your consideration will vote to approve the warrant, so tonight would be just the first public review of all the articles submitted. So, Article 1 in the special would be prior year fiscal financial article, which is a nine-tenths vote. You'll see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $9,696.92 for prior year bills. We will have the specific breakdown of what those bills are the night of the town meeting. Article 2, which is a majority vote, or if stabilization funds would be proposed by the mover of the article, it would then be two-thirds. You'll see $10,000 for the police expense account in the budget, and that's to cover the need to have done the work on the car access system. Next, you'll see $40,000 for veterans' benefits in Article 3. That's the amount of benefits that will be expended on veterans by the end of the fiscal year, in addition to the original appropriation and the reserve fund transfers that Joe has received. Article 4, you'll see $4,303 to supplement the library personnel account, and that's to make whole the line items for the existing salaries for the existing staff. They were short-budgeted by the two tenths of a percent of a week in this fiscal year that exists above and beyond last year's. Next, you'll see Article 5, which is $12,500 for the management information systems account, and that is to fund the amendment to the REA consulting contracts in order to cover Hartley for the period of time since he's been off of Cablevision and still functioning and showing up and doing work for us. This actually will allow Steve to pay him.
Yeah, you'll actually get paid for all of this.
In that regard, we obviously, we thank Steve for being willing to step up and service that vehicle, and we thank Hartley for continuing to show up, even though he's not yet been paid.
I'd like to make one correction on that. You said Cablevision, it should be Comcast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Article 6, $194,000 for the purpose of offsetting both the fiscal '15 and fiscal '16 snow and ice deficits. So, you'll recall that you have two $37,000 allocations for last year's snow and ice that were pushed forward, and this year, we're closing on roughly $120,000, so this article would support covering both of those. Next, Article 7 would be $2,900 for the purpose of providing auditing services for the town's fixed capital assets for fiscal year-end 2015. Article 8, you would see $15,000, which would be for paying for the demolition and related costs of a residential structure at Five Aquarius Lane, and to authorize a lien to be placed on the property for the full value of the work performed. Very briefly, because this is a very unusual article, there's a property at that address that has been collapsed and considerable decay for far too long. We have neighbors that are paying taxes, that are doing their part to be part of the community, that have been subjected to this property. The bank has not foreclosed. My understanding is they've, they've walked away and relinquished any responsibility. The owner is no longer participating in it, so it's just been left sitting. What this would do is concurrent with the building commissioner working with the attorney general's office to get us designated as receivers under a provision in the law that's new a couple of years ago, would allow us to perform the act of receiver, go in, do the demolition, lien the property, and we would take first position with our lien. So, it's, obviously, it's an outlay of the 15 grand to start, but the belief is that once the lot is cleared, then it's more of an attractive lot for resale, and either the bank will step in at that point and exercise their rights under the existing mortgage while the owner steps back in, but once it's sold, we reclaim.
That's been going on for a few years now.
Article 9, $20,000, again, this is a very unusual article, to compensate a retired employee due to no fault of his own for losses related to an expired life insurance policy. We've had a lot of discussion about this since I've been here. I don't know what, what conversation took place prior, but the short story is, this is a long-term, now-retired employee that had a life insurance policy, that the payments were to be made through payroll deduction, the bills were coming to the town, the deductions were being taken from the employee, but the bill wasn't being paid. Without going any deeper than that, it's not this guy's fault that we didn't pay the bill. Policy essentially canceled, given his, his, the details of his attempt to get reenact, the policy reenacted, reactivated, they're saying no, they won't do it. So, we have an obligation, legal, moral, inarguably, to make this guy whole, so this would be an article seeking to do that.
Do we know how we would return that? Would it be like in a special revenue account, and then if ever needed, it would transfer?
Yeah, I'd defer to counsel on the structure of, the wording of the article even. This is really conceptual.
Just real draft, okay.
More than anything else right now.
Okay.
Article 10 would be an article that came in by petition, and with the library trustees, seeking $26,935 for a supplement to the existing fiscal year '16 library operating budget. I can't speak to any detail about that, other than that it came in by petition. Article 11 similarly came in by petition, and it is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds to supplement the council aging budget for this current fiscal year '16 as well. Additionally, I have no information beyond the fact that it was submitted by petition.
Is there any money on it?
There's not, and an argument could be made that it would be fatally flawed without a number having been placed in it. I would argue that it's, I defer to counsel, obviously, but I would argue that it's not, because I would judge that a petition should be granted the same consideration that the government gets. We can submit articles that say to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum or sums of money, and then in the motion, add the dollar figure. So, I would expect the council would come back with the same, but, but obviously, there's a significant hill to climb for both the library and the council aging to be able to defend what the purpose is behind the ask.
Either way, they'd have to be more specific than this to tell us what the money's for, both of them.
And for where it's coming.
Yeah, they'd have to identify where the money's coming.
Oh, and where it's coming, absolutely.
Yeah. The motion will be on them to read.
Sure. So, that is the entirety of the special town meeting warrant. That then puts you into page 5, the beginning of the annual town meeting warrant. Article 1, usual and customary, majority vote is to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made. Article 2, again, usual and customary, to hear any reports at boards, committees, or commissions. So, any board, committee, or commission that's out that chooses to make a report would come in under that article. Article 3, I gather, also usual and customary, three West Townsend residents to serve as members of James H. Tucker Fund, according to request. Article 4, Article 4 is the vote seeking the reauthorization of the revolving funds for certain town departments, and they're listed in this, in this chart, Board of Health, Recreation, Facilities Maintenance, Cemetery, Fire Alarm, Animal Care Program, Inspection Services, and Fire EMS. These have all been previously authorized by the town meeting, so this is an ask to reauthorize. You'll note that the far right-hand column, the fiscal '17 limit, is not currently appearing in this draft, because Terry's working to determine what the available amounts are. I had originally, in my earlier draft, rolled in the amounts from last year, and when the chair and I were going over it, she correctly advised that we need to make certain that those amounts do exist before we go forward seeking to authorize it. So, that's why those blanks appear. Next, you'll see the fiscal '17 general government and school operating budgets, majority vote. And Article 5 would be to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds. You then see the asterisks. Follow that down to the table that appears directly beneath the text of the warrant article. It lists those other available funds by detail, cemetery lots, purpose, cemetery operating and capital needs. Comcast government access is the Bund and operating costs for MIS department. Title 5, Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, again, to pay the debt repayment for that program. West Townsend Reading Room to supplement their budget, ambulance receipts reserved to supplement the operations of the EMS, and Wetlands Protection to supplement Conservation Commission budget. Those amounts that appear would be amounts that are being, in this article, appropriated from those locations to fund the associated expenses within the annual town meeting, excuse me, annual general government budget. This is a little different than the way you've seen it in the past. Terry supports going forward this way. In the past, you would have seen a budget for the town, an article of the town budget that had all of the expenses listed, and several places they would have appeared parenthetical deductions within the budget for these amounts. So, in the cemetery budget, you would see a negative $6,300, and then there would be another budget, excuse me, another warrant article later in the night where appropriations from those accounts would take place. So, instead of having a budget that has negatives in it, and then having a separate article later that you need to then re-explain what it is as, as it relates back to the earlier negatives, this does it in one article, so there'll be no negatives showing in the budget. It'll be the clean budget with these amounts being appropriated to support those listed budgets. The budget will, not go into detail until we get through the warrant, which is why I'd ask that I be able to flip these, so we'll go through the details of the budget after we get through the warrant. Next, you see Article 6, which is, again, this has been done in the past in Townsend. A lot of communities do this. I've not seen this recently here in my review of warrants, but this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $85,000 to create a reserve for negotiated contract settlement and salary adjustment fund for union and non-union employees. So, what does that mean? In an earlier iteration of the budget, I had taken what seemed like a fiscally feasible percentage increase on union and non-union salaries and baked it into the budget, and there are several areas where you have individuals that are in positions today where I had earlier proposed that there'd be increases in hours, in some cases, of restructuring, because they're in union today versus where they were when I started this process. I can't do that as a matter of budget. It must be done as a matter of negotiation. So, where I had earlier in versions that you've each seen, where I had earlier had built into the budget salary increases and increases in hours for positions that are not covered by union, I pulled those back out, and they appear in this bucket in Article 6. So, what this allows us to do is go to town meetings, seek authorization to approve the budget and to approve this reserve, negotiate the contracts. To the extent that we have success in negotiating a salary increase, amen, the money is available, it's appropriated, it gets applied. If we're successful in negotiating increase in hours for certain positions that are in union, we then have it funded already, so that number represents what you would have seen earlier in your earlier versions, spread out through the entirety of the budget.
And I think it's important for folks to know, too, that that $85,000 is within our tax levy, it's within our operating. We're not using special revenue or anything to fund that, so...
Yeah, it's not one time, that's one thing I should say before we leave this article. The budget that I put forth here, admittedly, is just draft. It is just my draft. It's not yet FinCom, it's not yet Select Board. There are a couple of areas that I'll highlight where I've, I've got some additional work to do within the building, but the budget does not have any one-time revenue in it. There's no reliance on free cash, there's no reliance on stabilization or other one-time revenue sources. Not only is it within our ability to generate revenue through taxation and other fee structures, but at the end of the day, you'll see that there's actually a surplus available that, at least in my draft recommendation, I'd recommend that we leave on the table and not spend as excess levy capacity. As recently as last year, we had roughly $30,000 in excess levy capacity, which is an amount of money that you're allowed by law to raise and tax people, but that we hadn't. Somebody had made the decision to leave that capacity on the table unraised. What I'd like to do is at least try to match that amount that we burned last year and get back to where we were in building some of that excess capacity. Just gives you a hedge on future increases.
I think the only one-time revenues that we're using at all to fund the budget is for debt service payment, right? Is that...
We'll get to one, one spot later, which is going to be a transitional move to get away from what appears to have been a decision that was implemented over the last two fiscal years, which was to utilize capital stabilization funds to pay ongoing debt service, which would normally be carried within the operating budget. As it was originally done, as best I can see looking at the records, the capital plan was voted, and an amount of money was drawn from the capital stabilization fund to pay for and to buy those things. No debt was incurred on those things. Over the last couple of years, inarguably, because of some strain in the budget, it appears as though a move was made to use capital stabilization to pay debt service on some things that you might otherwise have just purchased. This year, we've identified what those specific items are. I'll get to those in a few moments, and we've, we've got some of it buried into the budget, covered through regular recurring operational revenues, and for a transitional year, one last piece of roughly $130,000 and change, I believe, for which two of the biggest components are, this is their final year. I think the fire truck, and I want to say the, the... I think the fire truck and I want to say the roof of the tech.
Roof of tech's got another two years, but the truck's done, and I think that's...
So we'll get to that in more detail in a few moments. So that's article six. Article seven is to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected offices of the town. Again, that's usual and customary. Article seven, this was submitted by the library board of trustees, and this would be either a majority vote or if stabilization funds were being proposed by the maker of the motion, it would be a two-thirds vote. And this is the library trustees seeking to raise, appropriate, borrow, or transfer to increase the fiscal seventeen library operating budget or take any other action related thereto. I've not had a conversation since this has been submitted. My understanding of it is this is a hedge in case what gets ultimately voted at town meeting to fund the library falls short of the trustees' expectations and wishes, that they would then utilize this article to seek to get additional funding into the library. My hope is that at the end of the process, this article will be moot and that the trustees will be satisfied with what's being proposed. But again, once we get to the budget, we'll see some more detail on that. Next, you'll see the seventeen water enterprise department budget, majority vote required. This article stands for six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar operations budget for the water department, and that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seventy-one dollars and one cent of that sum be appropriated to the general fund to fund the expenses that are borne in the general government budget that run back to the enterprise. Example, you have enterprise employees that have health insurance. The health insurance is paid for in the general government budget, so this is them paying that bill. There is an agreement that was reached some years ago, and in the back of the budget form, you'll see the very last page is a reflection of what that looks like in terms of percentages of a variety of expenses borne in the general government budget and then some specific ones. The health insurance is specific. It's, you know what the number is, you know what the employees are, and so the math and that point. Next, you'll see capital financial articles, majority vote. And the first is a hundred thousand dollars to pay off debt incurred for roadway improvements last year. Last year, there was a borrowing authorized to do a hundred thousand dollars worth of roadway work with the expectation we paid over time. This would be an appropriate time to say that we did receive our certification for free cash this past Friday, and that certification comes in just slightly north of a million dollars. So part of my hope would be, and I know that the chair and I have spoken about this and share this position, would be to pay off some of these things that we've got hanging out there that we've done as borrows. So this would be consistent with what we're doing with Snow and Ice. Just because we're allowed to bleed it out over a couple of years doesn't mean that's good business sense. If we've got the cash to pay this stuff down, the recommendation would be we do so. So article nine is to pay that hundred thousand dollars off from last year's roadwork. Article ten seeks an additional hundred for this year's roadwork, which wouldn't be a borrow, but would be a direct appropriation. So this would be the statute of purchase. Article eleven would be a hundred thousand dollars additionally for the purpose of paying off debt incurred related to the sixteen capital plan borrowing. Last year, there was, the capital plan put forward and voted was seven-hundred-some-odd thousand dollars authorization to borrow. So instead of having individual items to be purchased directly, there was a bucket put together of items to borrow. When the dust settled, roughly ninety-nine thousand dollars of that wasn't necessary, which will appear as an article in a little bit. So the net was a borrowing of six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. This seeks to put a hundred thousand dollars toward that and try to buy that down a little more quickly than would otherwise have been contemplated. Article twelve and thirteen, you already dealt with. Those are the two fire department articles for the IV pumps and the ambulance, and those, again, as the chief made clear, would be coming from ambulance receipts. Then they'd be a placeholder for water department submissions. I've spoken with Mr. Rafius on the matter, and I concur with his position that they are emergency in nature and would be afforded the same consideration that the fire department got. I had to put the placeholder because I'd not yet been able to delve into it with enough detail to be able to create articles.
I see Paul back there. We're going to be meeting next Tuesday and add him to the warrant at that time, so, just so you know, it'll be added on then.
Next, you get to general financial articles, majority vote. The first is four thousand dollars, and that's for the assessors periodic inspections for property data verification program mandated by Mass DOR. The next is article fifteen, which is an article that appeared in the folder that I inherited for a generator. The way it reads is the sum of fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars for the purpose of providing matching funds for a hazard mitigation planning grant to acquire generator. I need to do a little bit more work. I'm going to reach out to, I think Shirley's away now, so I'll reach out to Tom and make certain that I understand completely what this is going forward. My belief is that this was for consideration of the generator at Atwood. There'd be a little bit of work that would be necessary to do in order to be able to affect that because, and I heard Andy, I think appropriately, say this in an earlier meeting that I watched, where you have, in the constitution in Massachusetts, you have an inability to use tax dollars for a private purpose. It's called the anti-aid amendment. The one carve-out that I've been successful in using in other communities is if there's a nonprofit entity that is providing a service that you might otherwise, as a municipality, be responsible to provide, you have the ability to enter into a FIFA service agreement that says, in effect, you agree nonprofit to provide A, B, and C services to the community, which you'll report on quarterly to the satisfaction of the select board, and in return, you know, the community puts this money on the table. There may be a way to structure this to be able to meet the straight-faced test of the anti-aid amendment and still get the project done, so my hope is to work with Tom on that between now and the town meeting.
Chairman.
Seniors would appreciate that.
I'm sorry. Just for clarification, when you're talking to Tom and Shirley, there was some conversation that there might be two generators or one, so you might just want to touch base with that.
Yeah, I did see in the article that was in the file that there had been two originally in there, and then they were stricken. The second was stricken through.
Okay, I just didn't want you to know.
And there were notes in the file that said that, and it appeared that there was even a reference to council about why one was being stricken. So I'll make certain that we...
That's what I just wanted.
You should have the FEMA grant paperwork, too.
One was a mobile generator, and one was the one we hoped to put at Atwood.
Yeah, the Atwood one was the one, I think, that was intended to be scratched out because of exactly what you were talking about. The mobile, I thought, was still a go.
Okay. I'll make sure, I'll make sure to work with Tom on that.
I just, I know you're trying to put it together.
I know I signed two FEMA grant applications, right?
She was looking for... Okay, got you. Thank you very much.
Next, you'll see article sixteen, and this would be a vote to see if the town meeting will rescind ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars that was authorized as an appropriation of article twenty-three of the annual town meeting last year. This is the roughly a hundred thousand dollars of that seven-hundred-thousand-plus-dollar capital authorization that I said moments ago when the dust settled only needed to be six-thirty. So right now, we have authorization for the ninety-nine thousand sitting on our books. We need to show it as real, but it's not real. We don't need it, so let's get it out of the books. Article seventeen is an article that was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It was in the file, five thousand dollars to supplement the Conservation Commission's land fund. Article eighteen is an item that came in looking to replace the decorative flags for Main Street. This is an ask of five thousand dollars. Article nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are all related articles. Article nineteen is a specific provision in the general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three F and three-quarters, which allows us to set up a PEG or Public Education and Government Access and Cable-related Fund. So this basically is doing nothing other than creating an account into which the fees that will come under the negotiated agreement with Comcast will go. So every year, there'll be an amount of money that comes in pursuant to the franchise agreement. It would go into this fund. It doesn't mix with the general fund revenues, it stays here. This is all a precursor to setting up the nonprofit cable access arrangement. Article twenty would be to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transfer one-hundred-and-thirty thousand from cable receipts reserved into that cable-related fund. So presuming that town meeting says yes, you can create the fund, the very next article would be to appropriate the one-hundred-and-thirty thousand that we have just received pursuant to the franchise agreement into the fund. So then, at the end of article twenty, you have the legally created fund, and it has money in it. The last of the companion articles is to see if the town will vote to transfer from that fund the sum of one-hundred-and-thirty for cable-related expenses. This would be the very vanilla way of putting the money on the table so the cable commission can get meaningfully underway with creating a public access channel. So if there are legal funds that are required in order to get the thing established, they have a standalone line item that has been appropriated that they can expend against. When we look at the fact that we have someone partly that's been working for the company first, and now in this bridge capacity through REA, this would be a place to keep him going while that ultimate decision is being made on what the nonprofit would look like. So those three all go together. Obviously, if nineteen falls, we then need to look at what we're going to do with twenty and twenty-one. Ultimately, we still need to have an appropriation, so we would, in effect, be appropriating from cable receipts reserved into the warrant article below to give the cable advisory commission the same ability to create the entity. Article twenty-two and twenty-three are placeholders if there are funds available at this point in the warrant, and if town meeting chooses to put them into stabilization, proper or capital stabilization. These are just placeholder articles that would serve as a vehicle to allow that if it's the worship town meeting. Next, you get into, and those are two-thirds vote. Next, you get into the general bylaw and adoptions, majority vote. There's an article that's been submitted, and the language exists electronically, it's just not yet been rolled into this draft. The article twenty-four is outside watering. There would be a bylaw that would provide some restrictions on outside watering. Article twenty-five would be to amend the non-criminal disposition table in the bylaw to state that violations for the earlier enacted outside watering bylaw would be handled under non-criminal disposition. So it would give whoever is listed as an enforcement agent the opportunity to issue a ticket. Article twenty-six would be the acceptance of Alyssa Drive. Article twenty-seven, the acceptance of Trophy Ave. Article eight, should say two-thirds vote, zoning bylaw. And the zoning bylaw is, when we spoke of earlier this evening, the solar bylaw, which is an overlay district that's being sought. There'll be a two-thirds vote. And the last article, article twenty-nine, is a charter revision article, which would also be a two-thirds vote pursuant to the language in the existing charter. This is an article that, my understanding in talking with Cindy is that it would be her wish that it be a board submission. If not a board submission, she stands prepared to submit it herself, so it would have been presumptuous to list Board of Selectmen here, unless until you guys had the opportunity to hear it and think about it. But what this seeks to do is pursuant with section three-two of the existing charter to set in motion the process to change from a three-member board to a five-member board. And people should understand, if they don't, that that doesn't mean that this would happen at this town meeting or this election. You'd likely be looking at eighteen months before all of the steps that are necessary to take place would be able to take place. So just so people have a clear understanding going in and don't vote for something and expect to wake up the next day and have, you know, an election for two new members. So that's the charter revision article. That's article twenty-nine. That's the end of the annual town meeting warrant.
Jim, if you won't mind, could we take a five-minute break?
Amen.
Before we go into the budget? So I take a motion to recess for five minutes?
Make a motion. Do you want to entertain that?
Yeah, we'll entertain it when we get back. Go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion that we take a five-minute recess.
Second. Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order at nine PM. And before we had a recess, Kelly, Kelly had a question. Did you?
Sure. Good. Just a question. A couple times, who has said that that request was going to be paid for through an appropriation at a special meeting or at any town meeting, and I didn't hear a warrant about that.
My understanding is that Chief Barrio has been working diligently to put the place on expenditures, and that they should be able to cover it from then. So that's the expectation at this point.
Actually, too, Kelly, a couple, we were always intending to take it out of the expenses, but if needed, we would do an additional appropriation if it couldn't be absorbed within the budget. But before we had the other difficulties with the grants, we felt it could be absorbed in there. Okay, we're on to the draft, the budget?
Yes. Right. I've handed out to you this evening the most recent version of the budget, which you'll note is stamped on the front cover. In the header, it's also on each page, but I did want the front of it to actually have the stamp, so it has today's date on it. The kind of ten-thousand-foot view here before going to the document, the budget that I'm proposing in this draft this evening, and I emphasize again "draft" because between now and next week, I'd love to spend as much time with each of you individually as you can carve off and have an interest in. I've been doing that with you all along as individuals, but between now and making anything final, any additional time you have or want to spend, I'd like to do that. This budget is balanced. This budget does not utilize one-time revenues in the operating budget. It reflects, if you look on the back page, page sixteen, it reflects a three-point-one percent increase over the last year, over five-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and forty-eight cents. I think it's important to carve out kind of the big chunks of what's driving that. A full two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that is the high school debt coming onboard, which, if that weren't hitting this year, just to keep things in perspective about other operating expenditures, that reflects about one-point-three percent of the increase that we're seeing. So we'd be down to a one-point-eight, so less than our two-and-a-half percent. Additionally, the increase in health insurance accounts for an additional quarter percent increase in the overall budget. So all other, we'd be looking at a roughly one-point-five-five percent increase over last year. Having gone over that, if you start in the beginning of the budget document, you'll note that this is broken down by department, by account name, fiscal sixteen, the seventeen request, so that's the departmental request, the seventeen town administrator preliminaries, so that's this draft, the dollar variance and the percentage variance between my draft and sixteen. So seventeen is there for, seventeen request is there for reference. That does not tie to either the variance or the variance column, does. My recommended, again, sixteen is what the variance will show. Lastly, you'll see in the far right a column that shows notes. So anywhere there is something that's a little unusual or extraordinary, there's a note that you'll see in that far-right column. So hitting the high points, and again, this is redundant for each of you, but for those following along at home or in the room, you'll see several places, the first of which is in Board of Selectmen, wages, support staff, where people have had mid-year hour adjustments to pick up workload, and so sixteen won't show those hours in order to accurately reflect what's currently happening in the building today. Seventeen does show them. So it may look, for instance, in that line, as though there's an eight-point-six percent increase.[1799.65] So it may look, for instance, in that line as though there's an 8.6% increase. That's actually not something that's happening July 1st. That's something that has been a reflection of decisions that you made back in December to increase the hours back to more in par with where they had previously been. You'll next see the next note in the accounting salary. The town accountant, the recommendation from the accountant is to go from 25 to 37 and a half hours. Further, there's a note there that she's requested a split rate, and this is something that she expects that she's got herself in until the halfway point through the fiscal year, so December 31st, she would target as her retirement. She's at a certain point in the matrix, and her expectation would be that somebody that would be brought in to replace her would come in at a step or two lower, same grade, but a step or two lower in the matrix, given the fact that they wouldn't have had the longevity. I do have a note that in my meeting with the Finance Committee, one member in particular, Ms. Reposa, had the concern that perhaps that wasn't wise, that we should budget what we're paying just to be able to ensure that we're going to be able to land somebody. So there's a note in my draft that we might need to revisit that issue. I expect it to be a substance of conversation with the Finance Committee.
Do you even want to look at future discussions of making that a Finance Director's-type position with the increase of salary? The hours won't be needed.
Next you'll see a note in Treasure Collector. The Treasure Collector salary line proper is coming in a lower amount, 2,277 lower, and that's because it's a new person that's been brought in with a lower step. You'll then see something that looks curious in the next line because it says that we're adding two hours to the Assistant Treasure Collector, yet the budget line is going down by $9,200. What people may not have been aware of is there was a position budgeted, an additional position budgeted in that department but not filled, so that position is removed and additional hours are being allocated to the Assistant Treasure Collector. And this comes at the recommendation of our now-placed Treasure Collector. The next thing that will stand out with the notation is under Management Information Systems, we have for some time now had nothing but an expense line in this budget, no salary or personnel. There's been discussion about whether or not it's in the town's best interest moving forward into 17 to continue to have a contract service, a vendor, or whether we'd be better served in having an actual staff person onboard. If we didn't change this budget and break some of the funding out into a salary line or a personnel line, we'd be precluded from hiring somebody because we'd have money sitting there, but it would be an expense line and we couldn't touch it. So what this reflects is a $25,000 increase from what was a $50,000 contract services line to a $75,000 either contract services or person. And what I've done in this draft is broken out half of that, or $37,500, in a personnel line and half, $37,500, in a professional services expense line. That will allow the town to move forward into the fall and have the ability to bring somebody on as a body or bring somebody on as a vendor, and then at the special in the fall, take either the money from salary, move it down to expense, or expense up into salary, depending which way you choose to go. So this just preserves both options. The next you'll see is an issue that I referenced earlier, that I still have a couple of pieces of work to do in-house. And I, again, emphasize that this is a draft. At the very bottom of Page 3, you'll see under Conservation Commission, the suggestion that the conservation agent's position is reduced to 20 hours per week with five, consistent with what's been happening historically, with five of those hours coming from the Wetlands Fund. So I'll be, now that I've had the opportunity to roll this out with you, I'll be going in and having a discussion with Conservation Commission. Next you'll see on Page 4, under Planning Board Support Staff, 20 hours, and that had been a 25-hour position. I did get notice this morning from Karen Chapman that I should expect something from the Planning Board asking that that be increased back to 25. So I have a note in my draft notes on that request as well from the Planning Board. Next you'll see the ZBA. That doesn't change. It's still in there at five hours, but I've got it highlighted because it's a part of the overall consideration of what the land use structure would be. The last piece of which is the note under Land Use, Wages, Land Use Administrator at a full 40 hours. So what you had is two co-land use administrators, one of whom is no longer working, she's retired, which presents an opportunity to consider what the structure looks like. You've had two co-land use administrators, you've had a conservation agent, you've had a planning agent, and you've had a ZBA administrator. This budget, as it currently sits, would have a structure where you'd have a full-time land use coordinator at 40 hours, you'd have 20 conservation, 20 or 25 planning, five ZBA, and you would have a much more hierarchical structure to function under than kind of the disparate structure that you currently have. Some of this can't be done unless it's negotiated, which is why you'll note that the budget under Land Use Administrator actually doesn't reflect going to 40 hours because we don't have the ability to do that unless we've negotiated it now that there is a union group that's in place. So that is contemplated in that earlier article we talked about, the reserve for negotiated settlements.
I think streamlining that not only serves the government but the people pulling permits because they'll know exactly what CBA and planning and conservation needs.
Yeah. One of the other considerations there is we currently have an employee that is the incumbent conservation agent in a 40-hour position. So there are some implications regarding that as well. That position is not covered by the union, so it's not as cumbersome a situation from a labor relations perspective, but it still is a situation that needs to be kept on the table and kept in the forefront of all these discussions going forward. If the current incumbent were to decide not to come back to the position, it's a non-issue. If the current incumbent were to decide to want to come back to the position, there would be steps involved, and then it becomes a question of to what position is this person coming back? If you have the current expectation of 40 hours of employment, there is the opportunity for, under this scenario, 20 in conservation and 20 in planning, to still provide that 40 hours. I have been working with someone who's representing that person to make certain that we keep everything on the table and everybody's eyes wide open going forward. Next you'll see under Facilities Maintenance on Page 5, again, an increase in hours, not new hours being proposed, but a reflection of the current hours that were done as a mid-year adjustment for the Facilities Maintenance Coordinator. You'll next see in the expense lines for facilities, that energy and repair and maintenance of buildings, I am proposing a recommendation of a $10,000 and $5,000 reductions respectively. If you run a regression and look at what those lines have done over the last five, six, seven years, you'll see that they always run heavy. They've always come in with excess available. So this is just an attempt to try to true that up a little bit more. Nothing then noted until you get to the next, Page 6, Police Department. And something that will jump out to anybody looking at this spreadsheet is that the police chief for Fiscal 16 is listed at a salary of $108,089, and the budget proposal for Fiscal 17 for the police chief is $130,000 or a $21,911 increase. It's important, before this discussion goes too far down the road, to note that the police chief in Fiscal 16 was receiving a base salary and then was receiving an educational incentive known colloquially as the Quinn bill, which is 25% of your base for masters, and was additionally receiving some other stipends that brought the prior incumbent, prior full-time incumbents' total compensation to just about $140,000. So I think just making certain that as we discuss this going forward, that we're clear and pausing to say this isn't a $21,000, $22,000 increase over the prior full-time incumbent. It's just the decision to take the Quinn away from the new chief and roll it into the base.
And that encompasses this whole salary package instead of having it in the little items in it. Refresh my numbers, Cindy. Didn't we start them out at 125 and then six months after?
I'd have to look at it again.
You remember? I don't remember either.
That is correct.
It is correct?
It sounds about right.
Okay.
And in Police, you don't see any other notes in Police. There are a couple of things that are noteworthy, however, and perhaps actually warrant a note. If you look on Police Wages, Other, Training, which is Account 5125, you'll note that the prior year budget was $16,838. The proposal that I'm putting forward is $35,000. And Chief Eaton, incoming Chief Eaton, was very, very clear in expressing his wish that a significant increase in training be appropriated for the police budget. So this is an effort at meeting that request. The other thing that should jump out to you is 5192, which is Other, Stipends, Quinn. And Fiscal 16 was $144,000. The ask for 17 was $165,000. My recommended is $122,000. And before people go batty and start asking why it is that I would recommend cutting $22,000 from the police department, guys and gals, part of that is a reflection of the prior chief's Quinn no longer existing. But additionally, there's something that didn't make sense about the budget sheets that were submitted for this particular line item. And I think to Sam's credit and to Chief Barrio's credit, they're able to unravel the fact that baked into each officer's respective Quinn/stipend line in their labor sheets, those individual tabs for every employee, were what appeared to be six sick days dollar value. There were notes in the file that indicate that they were able to put their hands on that indicate that that's what the additional money is. I asked Rock if there's anything he's familiar with that would suggest why that would be something we would want to be doing. And as an officer, if you call in sick, you're out sick, your pay still comes from your salary line, so there's no need to cover somebody in that regard. If you call in sick and the position is, the slot is filled, there's an overtime expense, but that again is what the overtime line is meant to reflect. So Rock could see no reason that that would be structured like that, and accordingly, he made the recommendation that it be reduced. So that's why you see that reduction. So that number of 122 is a reflection of actual bodies in positions, degrees of education, times percentage that the Quinn bill would account for. So that's actual hard numbers now. You shouldn't see anything additional on Page 6. When you get to 7, under Fire EMS, you'll note that uniform allowance looks like the chief is recommending doing away with it. You'll see 8,400 and 2,700 respectively being zeroed out of the budget. They reappear down in the expense line. And the chief's position, and I know that a member of the Finance Committee will probably want to talk about this a little bit, but the chief's position is this isn't salary, this isn't money that the firefighter EMTs get for clothing. They have an expense allowance. They have the ability to buy things on account. So it's really an expense more than a salary issue, which is why he's made the recommendation that it be dropped into the lower line. Additionally, you'll see in Fire EMS, some increases for training, I think consistent with what's been done since, at least since Chief Barrio's been onboard, has been additional attention paid to some training issues. So this is Chief Boynton's ask for an increase in training budget. You'll then see that there's an increase being sought in the on-call EMS stipends. They've historically run around that $17,000 or $18,000 range. If you look on, again, Page 7, the line item for the account is 5191. He's asking to go to $26,000 next year, an increase of $8,125 or 45.5%. The reason he's asking that is because his guys have apparently historically received a dollar as standby pay, and it was brought to their attention and then from him to this budget, that there are other employees in the town who have standby and get $250. So this is a me-too ask. I'm not certain in my final version, this is still draft, my final version, whether that'll live the day or not. In fact, I spoke with Terry a little bit about it earlier today, and she said that there's actually a distinction between what's expected of those employees that are getting $250 versus what's expected of those that are getting the dollar, that there's actual work being performed versus just being available.
Yeah, they have to show up and perform tests.
Yeah, so we'll work on that between now and the final version, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. Next you'll see Communication Center. And when you look at Communication Center, Wages, Operations Staff, which is 5110, you'll note that there's a reduction in Communication Supervisor, but an increase for two full-time dispatchers. So the budget for 16 was $236,000. The budget for 17, that I would propose, would be $262, an increase of $26,000. This is the strong recommendation of, at Chief Barrio, that we currently have one telecommunicator who has a different title and receives a different rate of pay to perform certain administrative functions. The way Rock has come to understand it is when the position of Communication Supervisor IT was created, that person was kept whole in terms of that higher rate of pay, but not required to do the work because the work was being done by the incumbent in the Communication Supervisor IT position. Rock's request in this budget proposal is to go back to that model where you have a senior telecommunicator, head telecommunicator, who's responsible for certain administrative functions. It's a negotiation. It's not a negotiation to go back to what was, other than to bargain the impact, which is different than actual decisional bargaining. But there's some consideration in that bucket for additional compensation to be put on the table in a negotiation to reestablish that a little bit more clearly in terms of what the lines of responsibility are administratively for that lead telecommunicator. The additional money that comes from having cut that position also is where that $25,000 appeared when I mentioned in the IT budget, having increased it by $25,000 to get to the $75,000 for the hiring of a person or a contract. The hope across the board between the Facilities Coordinator, Police Chief, and Fire Chief would be to have a person or a contract, but one, across all functions. So we don't have what we have now, which is, you know, a couple of different groups, a couple of different consultants or contractors being responsible with their own pockets. I think we lose a lot of efficiency in doing it that way. So again, whether it's done by contract or by body is yet to be determined, but this budget contemplates being able to do either or the other. Next note, you will see, it won't appear until, actually, there's no note yet, but it's worthy of noting, Page 10 in the Education budgets, which appears in the bottom quarter of the page. Just for the ability for people to see more clearly what these assessments for both North Middlesex and Fort Worth Tech are made of, I've broken them out separately, so you see the base assessment. so you see the base assessment and the debt, and the debt for both of them. So for instance, you'll see that our base assessment for North Middlesex has in fact gone down by $27,000 next year. But debt has gone up. Actually, to be more reflective, I would need to break that out in '16 as well. But our debt went from $54,000 to $286,000 from '16 to '17.
I think what folks need to know too is that's just for the feasibility study. That's not for any debt. That's where incurred for the construction of the new high school.
Correct.
So that increase in debt is just the start of additional taxation for that.
Correct. I will make a note on that, that that's broken out.
And the lower assessment, I mean, I don't think, I mean, I think we all went to the school committee meeting. We can't thank Joan enough and the school committee for helping us, although they did make it very clear if they use this additional money out of their EMD or their savings, next year they're going to be coming back.
We're going to see an increase next year.
We're going to be seeing that and then, you know what I mean? So it'll be challenging, but...
And when we get to the revenue projections, I mean, there's, there was a very, very strong effort at being more conservative in revenues this year than we've been in the past, in large part because we know things like education are going to be a bigger hit next year. So will we have, even if it's just 30 or 35 grand of excess levy capacity, instead of doing, you know, what is unfortunately the norm, which is finding a way to spend it, there'll be an effort made to hold it off so it's available for next year.
And absorb it into that increase.
So to be able to soften the blow next year. Next note, you won't see until you get to Library, which is going to be on page 14. The Library Board of Trustees in their submitted budget, and I want to pause for a second. The Library Trustees are statutorily created. They're autonomous. They're quite powerful in what they have in terms of management oversight of the library. So deference is generally afforded to the Library Trustees, oftentimes even more so than locally elected boards and commissions, just because they are statutory. So that's just a side note. But they had requested increases in hours for the director and increases in hours for the children's librarian. So while every place else where there was a request for an increase in hours, I've highlighted where that's been done and specifically if it's something that is reflecting what's already being done today, or if it's something new. The same holds true here. The budget that I'm putting forth has an increase baked into it for the director to go from 32 to 37 and a half, and the children's librarian to go from 30 to 35. That was the request made by the trustees. Additionally, a request was made to increase the base rates for those positions. That does not appear in this budget. Consistent with everything that I've said about all salary adjustments, whether they're unionized, non-unionized, for individual contract or not contracted or represented in any way, consideration is contained within that article of the $85,000 to be able to treat everybody equally across the board, subject to that negotiation. So when I mentioned earlier in the warrant, that my hope would be that the article that the Library Trustees put on for '17 would be made moot. My hope would be that if this lives to see the day and gets voted at a town meeting, the increase in hours, that they would vote to pass over that article. But obviously, that's their prerogative. Next, you'll see...
Yeah, even if the money's appropriated though, it still has to be authorized us to be transferred into their budget, doesn't it, out of an article like that?
It's something that we've actually reached out to David on, on the mechanics of it. In my experience, no, it's a matter of if it's a union, it's a vote of this board. So if we've got, you know, the firefighters or the police officers or the telecommunications or the DPW, we negotiate, you know, an X percent increase, it's not real unless it's voted and authorized by you. That then affects the transfer. The non-unionized or non-contracted are available based on whatever consideration you as a board give. So it could be that, pursuant to the matrix, we would like to fund the CPI this year, CPIW for our region for labor, all-inclusive is .74 percent. You should take that matrix every year or other year and adjust it by the CPI to keep it fresh. So you don't end up with, what unfortunately happens is you put a matrix in place and people just move along in the matrix, but the underlying data never gets adjusted to keep current. So you may decide, as a board, for all those impacted by the matrix that aren't otherwise covered by a negotiation, we want to grow the matrix by that CPI. Or you may say, we're not going to grow it by the CPI, but we decide we want to implement the steps, you know, the two and a half percent steps that are suggested but not obligated. So ultimately, all of that rests with you, in my experience. But I've actually put the question out to David to make sure.
That's what I've always understood it too. So it'd be good to have that.
If you get to page 15, the thing you should note is under interest on short-term loans and issuance costs, which is line 5925, there's an increase from $9,000 to $20,000. And that's short-term borrowing on the million-dollar fire station into which would be rolled the 159, which was the purchase of the Legion and the demolition of the Legion, and the 530, which is, we talked about it earlier, it was 740, a bucket of capital reduced in the warrant, coming up this year by that 99, $100,000 to 630. This would be covering the band for that 630. Ideally, we'll be able to bite that down again next year by another chunk of money. Instead of keeping it on the books for five years, which I think was what the original plan was, trying to get rid of that couple or two.
I think that's what our anchors had. It was 45% interest is what they were suggesting, right?
That's what they plugged in. I think the expectation is we'd see much better than that, but that's what they plugged into the coupon rate, which makes no sense.
For 630, over a five-year maximum borrowing term.
It makes no sense to carry this into five years at four and a half points.
We've already carried it temporarily for two years, although it was extremely low.
Oh yeah, next to nothing.
Next to nothing.
County retirement, that's the actual, this year's budget. You recall, we've had some discussion about the fact that there are two numbers you get from county retirement. One is if you want to pay immediately, it's X. And if you want to pay it over time, it's X plus something. This is paying it immediately, so this is the lesser of those two numbers. So this would be a July payment. Health insurance, this shows the 5.5% increase, which is the number that we receive from our carrier, Maya. They're our agent on behalf of Blue Cross Blue Shield. We've had a lot of discussion about the fact that this is not sustainable, not only from a budgetary perspective, that this reflects discounting education in this budget. It's roughly 14% of our general government budget. We can't continue it like it is fiscally, but also we do have the implications of the Affordable Care Act and the fact that in '18, we'll be hit with the penalty, they call it the Cadillac tax penalty, for plans that are richer in level of benefit than the baseline or the benchmark plan. You could do them as a government if you choose, but if you choose to do so, you pay a penalty. So it's counterintuitive from the taxpayer's perspective that you would have employees getting a higher level of benefit than the law would recognize as appropriate and also pay a penalty on top of it. So over the next two years, there's going to be a great deal of work that is going to need to be done regarding health insurance. What I would recommend and what has been part of discussions I've had to date with members of the union, is to look at doing something with the split first. We're currently set at 85.15. 85% of the premium is paid by the taxpayer, 15 by the employee. I think that you'd be hard pressed to find many communities, if in fact nearly any, in our area particularly, that are still at an 85.15. For reference, I come from a 60/40 community most recently. I don't harbor any illusion that 60/40 is something that will happen in the town of Townsend anytime soon. But I think beginning the discussion of starting the pendulum swinging back, whether it's a 70/30 or something, there needs to be some discussion. And that becomes part of the negotiation. So while you have this article that puts a bucket of funding available for negotiations, it's not just free money. It's a negotiation. And there are things that I think are real and need to be considered, this being one of them. Plan design, which is the thing that's a little bit more difficult to affect, because that's actually the benefit, not just the amount that you pay, but the actual benefit. We need to get that done. And the town of Townsend needs to have that done by '18 in order to avoid the Cadillac tax. I would recommend tackling that in '17. I'd recommend having a approach that addresses the percentage split in '17, and then meaningfully over that next 18 months, deals with the issue of what is a reasonable place to get to in terms of plan design. But again, that would be my recommendation budget. It's yours as the board to determine how you want to do your town administration of the directional negotiations. So the overarching point is right now, this reflects no change. So for the purpose of this balanced budget, this contemplates no change at all, because I can't create a budget and present a budget that is on the belief that something will change. It's not truly balanced at that point. So it could be that this comes to play mid-year and gives us the ability then to reduce the budget or generate free cash towards that cliff we're looking at for next year, particularly for education. Follow that?
I am.
And the last note you'll see is on the last page, which is 16, General Property Liability and Vehicle Insurance. This has been carried at last year's rate, and I've learned that last year's rate wasn't even sufficient to cover what the bill was, that there was some...
I think the workers' comp audit hit, didn't it?
Yeah, there was some finesse that needed to go on. So without, I think the hour's late and the agenda is still long.
Yeah, I think it's just workers' compensation.
That is flagged as pending, because I think we may yet still see that needs to go up. So within the next week, that's probably the number one to determine what that number needs to be.
I recall it's the property hit for the new fire station and our workers' comp audit that we were a deficit in, so...
So that puts us again to the bottom line of $19,808,765 for 3.1% total increase over '16, if my preliminary draft ultimately were adopted. Can't emphasize enough, it's preliminary and drafted. I know that, again, the hour is late, but I did want to spend a moment on the revenue expense worksheets. You should have each received a copy of an updated one, also stamped with today's date on it. The front page entitled Revenue Expense Cover Sheet, this is just the 10,000-foot view again, showing all things considered, that there's a balance. So tax levy, for which there's a separate page in detail, local receipts, other available, and cherry sheet receipts, each of which has its own page that breaks out the detail over the last number of years. Gives us a total revenue of $20,768,494. Then you take the expense part of the chart, general government budget, water budget, allowance for abatements and exemptions, just a brief commercial update on what that means. Every year, we assess based on our best efforts, what we think your house is worth, and then against the tax rate, what your tax bill is. You have the absolute right to challenge that. And it could become a difficult situation for us from a budget perspective. If we build a budget and we march off into the future believing that we've got so much money to run the business, and then you challenge and we realize we made a mistake and we have to refund you or abate you, because then we'd be out of balance. So every year, you're required to hold an amount aside as an allowance for abatements. Assessors recommend this $100,000 figure. So for fiscal '17, we'll have $100,000 appropriated in case there's a challenge and in case there's, somebody prevails in their challenge and there needs to be an abatement. What happens to that money if it's not spent, if there aren't challenges and abatements that eat that full $100,000? It actually sits for a period of three years. And after three years, if there are no pending abatement cases against it, you have the ability to go to town meeting and have it voted as what's called overlay surplus, and it becomes another available fund. You can close it to free cash, you can appropriate from it, you can do any number of things you could with any funds, but not until three years has passed and there's nothing pending against it. Next, you'll see the cherry sheet assessments. Again, right now, the cherry sheet receipts above and the assessments below are based on the governor's budget, because that's all we have right now. So that's still subject to change. The House and the Senate still have their cracks at it. Then the conference committee will wrestle between the House and the Senate to come to consensus. And then the governor still has the ability to veto anything that he doesn't like there. So there's still a lot of mileage that needs to be covered between now and what we know will be final in those. It's reasonable to believe that we won't see reductions there, based on everything that's coming out of the House and the Senate. But the caveat is, you just don't know until the ink is dry and the deal's done. So that's the 10,000-foot view cover sheet. Tax levy, I won't go into detail, but basically you take the first three lines of the prior year, and that appears as your new base. So it's last year's tax levy, additional two and a half, and new growth. That is your new base, from which you then hit your new two and a half and your projected growth. Growth, I'll make a note that while a suggestion was made that we could use 110, it's actually 102, a little bit less, just using a 97% of a four-year actual average. Again, just trying to be a little bit more conservative. So we're seeing $16,209, excuse me, $16,209 for total tax levy. Local receipts, this is motor vehicle, meals tax, penalties and interest, payment in lieu of taxes, rental income. By the way, rental income is because we have a cell tower and we get rent every year. Other departmental, fines and forfeitures. The thing that I would draw your attention to here is that the total projected for '17 is $1,655,000. You'd have to go back a full three fiscal years to fiscal '14, where it's $1,649, perfectly the same, to get as far back to that number. In '15, it was $1,800,000 and in '16, $1,700,000. So at $1,650,000, we're trying again to be a little bit more conservative. I think that's a low number. I fully believe that it's going to come in much higher than that. But there's no guarantee. You don't know what's going to happen. Here we are, 18 months out from when this stuff is actually going to come to play.
Things do seem to be moving in the right direction. There's a lot of building permits and things, so that's a positive sign for us.
Other available funds is the next breakout. That's water income, free cash, if we're using any stabilization, if we're using any overlay surplus. Again, we mentioned that just a moment ago. Water retained earnings, ambulance receipts, wealth protection fund, cemetery sale of lots, Comcast, Title V septic. So these are things that you'll have seen in the warrant article for the budget, where we're using a certain amount of money from West Townsend Reading Room and from cemetery sale of lots. This is the chart from where those are drawn. And that is for fiscal '17, $1,340. And this current budget is $1,400,000. The year before was $1,675,000. The year before that was $2.3 million. The year before that, $2.6 million. So back in '13, or a full five fiscal years ago, we were at $2.67, down to the $1,300,000. So again, the hope is that it's, we're being more conservative. Some of that, if we're being honest, is because there was free cash and stabilization used in the budget in prior years. Next, you'll see the assessments, which again is the cherry sheet based on the governor. So this is to offset the revenue they're going to give, we get hit with these assessments. So they're, again, they're only as good as the governor's budget. Lastly, is the water indirect cost agreement. So this, again, Teri is vetting these numbers to make certain that they're the most accurate and up to date. You've got the pro rata share of county retirement, Medicare, workers' compensation, general liability insurance, professional liability, public liability, property machinery insurance, auto liability, debt service, and health insurance and life insurance. So that totals $189,071, which appeared again in that budget article for the Water Enterprise Fund as the amount appropriated from within the total that comes to offset the expenses in the general government budget. One point that Teri brought to my attention that I'll be speaking with Mr. Refuse about, just to give clarity, is in the water department budget, there is budgeted... just to give clarity, is in the water department budget, there is a budgeted position that was not filled this year. It appears in the ask for '17, again. If in fact that position lives through town meeting and gets filled, is it likely that that position is going to have health insurance? It's a full-time position, so presumption is likely. You would need to be mindful of what that's going to be, because that's roughly 23 grand ahead for health insurance, so we want to make sure that we have a sense of what the...
Do we have to put a cap on the enterprise fund for the intermunicipal related costs?
DOR, this form fits with DOR, with their guidance, so as long as it's defensible and actual, or tied as a percentage. You'll note at the top that it's total gross payroll in town against the water department payroll, generates a percentage, so it's 7.7 percent. So there are certain of these expenses that are 7.7 percent of the overall expense, and others are the actuals based on headcount. So this is... Terry said that this is something that DOR is very aware of, they watch very closely. So quite a bit of work to do yet between now and next week, but I want to thank you guys for giving the time and the attention that you have. I know it's been a really truncated budget season, just because '15 wasn't finished, and '16 has had a couple of issues. So I think the fact that we are where we are tonight is something that actually surprises me from what I was thinking a month ago.
Well, it might be in part due to your work, so thank you.
And the work.
I'll accept a piece of that, but again, I mean, you guys have been very responsive to come in and help me understand what the ministry has... Department heads have been fantastic. I mean, I, for lack of a better descriptor, I jerked them around a little bit, because I came in and issued Andy's budget note, which had 2.5 percent increases in it, because that's what I inherited, and it seemed like a logical thing. I quickly realized that's probably not the best thing, so I had to have a redo, so they had to redo budgets, and they've been very, very accommodating, very gracious, very helpful in pointing out things that they think, you know, historically may have been budgeted one way and would be better budgeted a different way, which is some of the consolidations you see. So you've got a great, great group of department heads that I think work very hard, and, you know, they don't get the opportunity to come in and sit on TV, you know, every couple of weeks, but perhaps they should.
Point taken.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
4.2, Board of Selectmen's Announcements, Updates, and Reports. Cindy? I don't have anything.
I have nothing, ma'am, Jim.
Okay, I have a few things. I'll keep it short, because we're all tired. Just to let folks know that we did go, that Board of Selectmen did represent some of the homeowners who Kinder Morgan is trying to bypass their permission and seek permission for the Department of Public Utilities. We did go and read a statement on behalf of them. I was gonna read it into the record, but since it's almost 10 o'clock, I was hoping maybe we could just put it on the website if anybody was curious as to that.
And credit to Carolyn Sellers.
Yes, that was the other part of it. I'm glad, yeah.
She was dogged in her effort, and this statement that got into the record is...
Carolyn Sellers' work?
Yeah, she did a really, really nice job.
I went and read it for her and really appreciate it, and that was the other point that I wanted to bring up with Carolyn. Have you been able to touch base to see if she was interested in our alternate member on the coalition by any chance?
I have not.
Okay. So if we want to check, because we should fill that. If she's not interested, one of us should try and step up and do that. I was... Okay, so we're gonna be, hopefully, if possible, meeting with the FinCom next Tuesday. Is that to go over the budget specifically, or maybe you leave it up to Jim and ask him, ask the FinCom if it'd be easier for us to attend their meeting or for them to come here?
We have the chair here. I mean, I intend, now that I've publicly had the opportunity to present things and draft to you, I'll email Dawn, the chair of the FinCom tonight, the draft warrant and the draft, double draft, emphasis draft, budget. So he has it to distribute to his members tonight, and, I mean, we're gonna try to get together about next Monday. It's a holiday, perhaps Tuesday, in the working group, Cindy and Dawn and myself. So I don't know what your pleasure is, if it's you all come to the next board meeting or they come to you guys, but yeah, sooner or later, obviously.
Yeah, sooner than later. And I didn't know if we wanted to have a discussion at the same meeting about the charter review. We've never gone over the specific charter, and since you were on that committee, I didn't know if we wanted to do it.
I would also suggest that the core members that are still on the committee...
Oh, yeah, they would be contacted. Yeah, absolutely. So I was just, do you want to try and structure that for us?
I'll work with Dawn on that.
Okay.
And the current chair of the charter review committee, which is not Dawn.
It would be Mike.
Yeah. One last thing, and I apologize that I didn't say this earlier or ask this earlier. My expectation is that I would prepare a document that shows the numbered articles in the warrant with the Selectmen recommendation and the FinCom recommendation, to the extent that it's a planning issue, planning board's recommendation where it's required. Is that something you've done traditionally, where there's been one master sheet that people can follow along on?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And from the way the warrant reads, I was curious to see that it doesn't look like the actual budget appears as a part of the warrant. It's an article that references the budget document. So I'll talk with each of you offline about your pleasure there, if you'd like to continue that, or if you would like to see some truncated omnibus version that shows department totals, so people at least have something within the warrant to refer to. Whatever your pleasure there, but whatever document goes out, my expectation would be there would be a TA recommended, there'd be a board recommended, and a FinCom recommended. Is that usual and customary as well?
Traditionally, it would be... There was a few years where it was Board of Selectmen recommended, but traditionally in Townsend, we voted on the FinCom recommended final column. So hopefully, we're all in agreement, and there would only need to be one column, but there has been years where there's been two separate columns.
Okay. And I guess proceeding with separate columns until we know that there could only be one column, ideally?
We're working diligently to get through. We're meeting with Highway and the library this Thursday. I will present the articles. I can't guarantee that we'll get through all of them on Thursday. We'll try, but we need to get it completed within the next two weeks, because all this needs to be put together before town meeting.
Now, the last, one of the last things I have is we received an email today, Jody, right? We have a Boy Scout proclamation request for ceremony this Sunday. I know how much you enjoyed it last time, Cor.
Is this an Eagle Scout thing?
Eagle Scout.
Can I call the administration? I gotta check.
Yep, because one of us have to go, so we're gonna have to sign the proclamation outside of a meeting. Jody sent them a sample proclamation, so hopefully, they'll get us that information back today, tomorrow, so she can prepare that. We'll have to come in Friday when she calls us, or, yeah, whenever we can to sign it. And one of us needs to go on Sunday, so Jim, you could...
Yeah.
That would be great, because I will be there if no one else can.
I can't.
Okay. Cindy's out.
I'm out.
I will... I'll talk to you.
At the Congo Church, so...
Gotcha.
Okay. Sorry, but a last minute, but we just received the email today, so...
This Sunday?
Yes. Actually, does he say?
17th, right?
Yes. You sent him to 10, please. 2:00 PM, Townsend, Congo Church.
I'll talk.
Okay. That was it.
One last thing, I apologize. Over the past several years, Cushing and Cameron have had their day of service on behalf of the board of their trustees that passed away, and Townsend has benefited by having them come in. And this Thursday, so two days from now, we'll have a crew of kids, 15 to 20 kids. There's been great cooperation, you know, between public works, facilities, parks, cemetery to coordinate tools and what work needs to be done and make certain that everybody's rowing in the right direction together. So you should see monstrous piles of mulch in strategic locations around town Thursday morning, and by the end of the day, God willing, it'll all be tucked where it's supposed to go, and things will look nice. So if anybody has an interest and an opportunity Thursday to, you know, pitch in and break some mulch, by all means, come join us.
Did we figure out how we're gonna feed all of this crew?
We have.
That's the one requirement.
We've got that figured as well.
Good, great.
That's awesome.
That is awesome. Okay, so, pulling my agenda here. 4.4, Review and Sign Bill's Payable and Payroll Warrants.
With a motion that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Good night, folks.